Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my pleasure to welcome Pastor Betsy Willette Zierden from Good Samaritan United Methodist Church to provide our invocation for today.
It's a pleasure to be in the presence of such great leaders and champions behind me. I'd like to, in honor of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., just share some of his words from the address he made, and it's called "Where Do We Go From Here?" He gave this at the Southern Christian Leadership Association in 1967, and I promise I'm only sharing an excerpt. He says, "I'm concerned about a better world. I'm concerned about justice. I'm concerned about brotherhood. I'm concerned about truth. And we got to get this thing right. What is needed is a realization that power without love is reckless and abusive, and that love without power is sentimental and anemic. Power at its best, power at its very best, is love implementing the demands of justice. And justice at its best is love correcting everything that stands against love. And this is what we must see as we move on. The road won't always be smooth. There will be rocky places of frustration and meandering points of bewilderment. There will be inevitable setbacks here and there. And there will be those moments when the buoyancy of hope will be transformed into the fatigue of despair. But our dreams will sometimes be shattered and our ethereal hopes blasted, but we must walk on in the days ahead with audacious faith in the future. Let us pray. God of justice, God of brotherhood and sisterhood, God of truth, give the Leon County Commissioners faith and belief that their service can and will make a positive difference for the people who live and work in Leon County. When their meetings go long, give them stamina, perseverance, and a sense of humor. When conversations grow contentious, remind each of them that they are called to speak truth and love, and that listening deeply is often the best way towards mutual understanding. When the county commissioners are given the opportunity to work with the city commission, may issues of ownership and credit be far from their minds as they together move us forward towards a safer and economically just society. Thank you, Almighty God, for the many good things that will be accomplished this year in our community as these leaders in our community work together and as we, in the words of Martin Luther King Jr., walk on in an audacious faith in the future. Amen.
(Inaudible) All right, as Commissioner Dozier makes her way down to the podium, we will be recognizing some special guests that we're going to honor here today. And to steal my good friend, Mr. Roosevelt Williams' cliche, we'll kick it off with the FSU women's soccer team. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the team gathers around up here, we are thrilled that they could join us today. And head coach Mark Kikorian's here and a number of others. We also have interim athletic director from FSU David Coburn with us today. And as I was just telling the team, I know that this is a highly sought-after honor to provide a proclamation particularly for a national championship as our women's soccer team provided the community this year. So this is on behalf of the entire county commission and the community. Before we do that, I just wanted to share one bit of news which was announced just late last week. The Capital One Cup is a ranking of men and women's athletic programs across the country. And FSU women's athletics was ranked second in the nation last week in large part due to what these ladies have done on the soccer.[365.81][365.81](Applause). And this is a big year for women's athletics, right, at FSU? The 50th anniversary of women's athletics at FSU. And in some of the reporting, it looks like we could have even better year this year with what you all do and your colleagues from tennis to golf to softball and everyone else. So congratulations. And this is a big day. We've got four amazing proclamations celebrating four different athletics programs, so it is my honor to kick it off with this proclamation for FSU women's soccer. Whereas the FSU women's soccer team defeated the University of North Carolina 1-0 to win the 2018 NCAA Women's College Cup. And whereas this is the second college cup title in the school's history. And whereas this is Florida State University's second overall national title in the past seven months. Whereas during the college cup tournament, Florida State University was able to shut out Sanford University and the University of North Carolina, two of the most potent offenses in college soccer. Whereas during, Dallas Dorsey netted the only goal of the game in the 60th minute and was named the college cup most outstanding offensive player. Dallas, are you here?
Yeah.
Right there. Well done. And I may not go through all the names, but if you're here, raise your hand for everyone. And whereas Jalen Howell was honored as the college cup's most outstanding defensive player. There we go. And whereas along with Malia Berkeley, Gabby Carl, Natalie Queika, Carolyn Jeffers were named the NCAA All-Tournament Team. Got some of you ladies here. And whereas Gabby Carl receives 2018 NCAA Elite 90 Award, given to the student athlete with the highest GPA at the 2018 Women's College World Cup. That is fantastic. Whereas these student athletes represent the dedication required to excel both on the field and in the classroom. And whereas 2018 celebrates the 50th year of women's athletics at Florida State University. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we congratulate the Florida State University Women's Soccer Team and their coaches and staff for their success as the 2018 NCAA Women's College Cup Champions. Congratulations. We look forward to having you back next year.[520.16][520.16](Applause). Anybody want to say anything? Anybody feel brave? No? Got some? Okay. All right.
Yes, we just wanted to say thank you so much. We appreciate all of the support and continuous support that you guys put on us. As she said, the 50th year and bringing a national title along with the softball team, it's nothing but an honor, and we're just blessed to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.[546.16][546.16](Applause).
If we could, we'd like to get a photo opportunity here on the dais. Is that correct? Yeah, okay.
Your program, Mr. Chair. All right. Ladies, if you'd join us up on the dais for...
We going out there?
There we go. Or we can fill in right here as well. Yes, where all the names are.
That'll work, yeah.
I'll be happy to hold the trophy.[592.32][592.32](Laughter).
Good luck with that.
Okay, we have two cameras here, so go ahead, look at this camera first.
Ready? One, two.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay, let me. Two more, please.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to note that last week on Wednesday, that this team was acknowledged at the Martin Luther King Celebration downstairs in Rotunda. And the MLK Foundation of Florida presented their, the head coach, with memento observing this accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Athletic Director Coburn, thank you for coming out today and supporting our soccer teams. Good to see you. Going to the dais now. Commissioner Maddox has another proclamation recognizing some unbelievable athletes here in Tallahassee and Leon County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to call the Chairs Eagles up, please. Hold up.[706.12][706.12](Applause). All right, y'all, come on. Some of y'all can in on this side. Spread out. Here we go. Come on, y'all. Mr. Chair, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Pop Warner Little Scholars EAK is a nonprofit organization founded in 1929 that promotes youth football, cheer, and dance programs for participants in many states and countries around the world. And whereas with approximately 325,000 youth participants ranging from age five to 16 years old, Pop Warner is the largest youth football cheer and dance program in the world. And whereas Pop Warner is the only national youth sports organization that requires scholastic aptitude to participate in their program's philosophy, and their program's philosophy remains that athletics and scholastics go hand in hand. And whereas every year, teams from around the world gather to participate in the Pop Warner National Championship to crown the Pop Warner Super Bowl Champions in each bracket. And whereas the Chairs Eagles are a part of Leon County Big Ben Pop Warner Football Program. And whereas the Chairs Eagles had an undefeated season in the Division III Pee Wee League, ending with a 12 and no season record. And whereas on December 6, 2018, the Chairs Eagles, under the direction of head coach Tremaine Hughes, won the Pop Warner National Championship, defeating teams from as far as Spokane, Washington, and Raleigh, North Carolina to bring the Super Bowl title home to Leon County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we honor and celebrate Chairs Eagles for their undefeated season and national championship win. This is signed by the chair, the rest is commissioned and attested to by the county administrator. Congratulations, gentlemen."[841.12][841.12](Applause).
On behalf of our team, our board, the parents, we're grateful to the community. As some of you may know, we had to do a lot of fundraising to go this far. We traveled over 2,500 miles, and we're extremely thankful and humbled by this opportunity, and we greatly appreciate it.
Commissioner Dozier.
I was about to make mention that the only reason I'm up here, Commissioner Dozier, is not because I thought of it first, but she told me, she was like, "That was on my mind. You just got to me first." So come on down after you finish speaking and get this picture with me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all. Yes, you are represented by Commissioner Maddox at large, Commissioner Lindley, but you are in the best county commission district, right? District five. So Chair's cabinet, yeah. No offense, yeah. Congratulations, all of you, and I'm glad you mentioned the fundraising. I know we had a conversation many months ago. There's a lot of work that needs to be done with Pop Warner. It's such an incredible program and really thrilled that you all were able to achieve it this year and make your travel, and we're here to support you in the future. So well done, all of you. Thanks for coming in.
If I could, Mr. Chair, ask all the parents that are here of players to please stand. Parents?
Stand up.
Come on, stand up. Don't be shy.[929.73][929.73](Applause). These parents traveled a lot in order for them to see their kids playing. They should be commended for the job they did during the year, not only athletically, but also with their academics, to make sure they keep their grades up while they travel and play football across the state of Florida and the nation. So thank you so much to the parents as well. Parents, you come up and take the picture as well? Commissioner Dozier, you guys want to get out front?
Bring them right front.
Yeah. So just around the dais right there. Commissioner, Coach Willie Simmons is in the house, family's head football coach. I hope that we could include him at some point in one of the photos. That might be a little sweetener on the photo. Huh? He can't come? Oh, it's illegal? I'm sorry. Hey, man, all right. I apologize. Coach, Coach, I was trying.[984.12][984.12](Laughter). If anybody from the NCAA is here, Commissioner Proctor doesn't know the recruiting rules.
Let all these folks get their photos, and then I'll get the official county coordinator. Okay? Everyone looking at me, please? Take three. One, two, three. One more, please. Looking at me. Thank you.[1032.12][1032.12](Clerk) And Commissioner Maddox, you're up again at the podium, I believe.
We have a video to accompany today's presentation.
We do. We do have a video, but before I do that, I do want to make mention that Pop Warner started here about, what, five, 10 years ago or so with a $60,000 grant from this board, and they promised they wouldn't come back and ask for another dime, and they have not. They have been self-sustaining ever since. They should be very proud of that, and it's one of the premier programs that we have at our Leon County parks. Now, before I start my next proclamation, I want to start with a video.
(Music) Seventy-three hours. That's the timeframe from when Michael was named as a tropical storm with winds just over 40 miles per hour to the category four hurricane that it became, with winds sustained at 155 miles per hour, just two miles per hour under a category five.
Completely devastated. Every street looked like, looks like a war zone, like a bomb went off. It's just devastating. No one was ever focusing on small areas that is beyond that. So therefore, you know, when we woke up very good morning, there was nobody there but us, right? It was just a community. There was no, you know, there was no National Guard. There was no, you know, rescue workers. There was just family and communities that were trying to, really trying to comprehend what had just happened.[1154.02][1154.02](Music) We met the residents of this destroyed home, as many on the coastline were, but Michael's powerful storm surge is underscored by their home being displaced over 450 feet to this location across the highway in Mexico Beach. Seventy-two hours after landfall, and with devastation all around, the Rattlers would win their biggest game in two decades.[1187.41][1187.41](Crowd cheering) Immediately following the game, head coach Willie Simmons turns his attention back to the Florida Panhandle. We want to dedicate this win to everyone affected by Hurricane Michael. Our thoughts and our prayers are with you. God bless you.
Volunteers are very important in the community. Any, any hand, additional hands to help out and help serve and provide anything that the folks need is always a blessing. Folks have come up and said that every entrance, entrance to their house is completely blocked by trees down, and there's just people out here delivering meals to them, and that's been wonderful.
What follows is the very definition of humanity. From the campus of Florida A&amp;M University, outreach became everyone's purpose, led by Florida State Representative Remond Alexander. FAMU athletics join in their immediate need for volunteers, assisting the Salvation Army and other independent outreach missions.
Today has really been just kind of a long day of giving. We started off today, we had a breast cancer wall, where we also took donations for this hurricane relief project today. And it was a lot of long phone calls this week trying to get everything organized, but it was all worth it. In the end, we had some great sponsors. We had a gentleman down in Miami sponsor a thousand dollars to help him come and donate a lot of the supplies that we did donate today. So at the end of the day, it's all for a good cause, and it's all worth it.
Well, I tell you, you know, we, our hearts go out to, you know, so many of the citizens and residents within the Big Ben area to include all of those who live throughout the areas of Mariana where we are here today, as well as Apalachicola and all the way up to Panama City and Pensacola. And of course, when this devastating storm, Michael, hit, one of the first things that I thought about was my humble beginnings in Miami, living through Andrew and several storms over the years. I said, "It's just something that we have to do." On behalf of the university as an extension with the FAMU Cares that Dr. Larry Robinson drives.
It will be quite a while before the Panhandle fully recovers, but with the love, donations, and outreach of various entities on the campus, it is clear to those in need that FAMU cares.[1324.02][1324.02](Applause).
I would like to now call up Athletic Director John Easton, head coach Willie Simmons, and all those representatives for A&amp;M University to come up. He presented proclamation. Coach Easton, I got to tell you, I was over there talking to kids, and when he saw you walking in, he thought you was going to make him run some gases.[1341.02][1341.02](Laughter). You guys don't know, Coach Easton was, coached some of the premier wide receivers at Florida State back in the heyday.[1349.33][1349.33](Laughter). Yeah, I said, "Kids, you all right over there? You feeling nervous?"[1352.83][1352.83](Laughter). You know, oftentimes, we do celebrate our championships here in Leon County, but today we get to celebrate another kind of championship in being a champion of humanity. The job, the effort it took for, for that football team and this athletic program to get back and drive that long, because I believe it was a bus ride, it wasn't a flight, it was a bus ride back home, to be a part of that recovery effort is, is amazing, and that deserves to be celebrated. Proclamation reads, "Whereas Florida Agriculture and Mechanical University was founded in 1887, in Tallahassee, Florida, where it has evolved into the premier school among historical black colleges and universities and remains the only historical black university in the 11-member state university system of Florida. And whereas Florida Agriculture and Mechanical University is a true community partner to the residents of Tallahassee and Leon County. And whereas Hurricane Michael may landfall as a high-end category four hurricane with maximum sustained speed, winds of 155, 155 miles per hour on October the 10th, 2018 in Mexico Beach, Florida, devastating the Panhandle region. And whereas the Florida A&amp;M Rattler Football Team, under the leadership of head coach Willie Simmons, after defeating the North Carolina A&amp;T Aggies on October the 13th, 2018, rushed back to Florida to assist with the hurricane recovery efforts. And whereas FAMU athletes join forces with recovery organizations to provide direct assistance to those most in need by delivering food, water, and other necessities. And whereas FAMU athletics work tirelessly to assist on community, to assist our community in the entire Panhandle of Florida by providing hope and support. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners in Leon County, Florida, that FAMU athletes be recognized, honored, and commended for their service and support for recovery efforts in the aftermath of Hurricane Michael. This is signed by the chair, as well as myself, the rest is commissioned and attested to by the county administrator. Thank you, Coach."[1487.15][1487.15](Applause). First off, I want to make sure I'm in order and ask my athletic director if he wants to say any words. Again, first off, honored to God to be here, and the football team gets a lot of credit for this endeavor, obviously because of our big win over North Carolina A&amp;T, who was number one in the country at the time, and for us coming back on a 13-hour bus ride and turn around the next day and deliver services. But we weren't alone. Every sport was represented, from basketball to baseball, softball, tennis, golf, you name it. And as a collective group driven by the players, we all decided it was, it was necessary for us to give back to this great community that supported us for all of these years. And so, again, we're just very thankful. We're very blessed to be in the opportunity that we're in, to be able to give back and to be able to help and to have a lot of able-bodied, strong college athletes that can go out and pass out waters and food and not complain about being in the heat for three or four hours because that's what we ask them to do, and continue to practice, continue to go to class and do the things that they need to do with student athletes. But just so thankful to be around a great group of student athletes who didn't complain one time. And for us to, to stay on campus throughout the storm and to weather it together as a, as a football family was one of our greatest moments as a head coach this year. And again, just so honored to be here today. Thank you, county commissioner, for recognizing us today, for recognizing these tremendous student athletes that we get to coach every day, that really represent what it means to be a true Florida A&amp;M Rattler. And our motto, excellence with caring, has truly been shown throughout these last few months. And our efforts aren't done. We understand that this recovery is going to take months, and we're still doing things to this day. And so, again, but thank you so much. It's honored to be here and, Coach, everybody, always the first of the football coach to be the spokesperson, I guess, so.[1620.83][1620.83](Laughter). But again, Commissioner Proctor, not that I don't want to be in the photo shoots, but we don't want to break any NCAA violations with the young athletes. Some future Rattlers problem, sure, up there taking those pictures earlier. But again, honored to be here today, and thank you so much for just this recognition, and we'll continue to do the best that we can to represent this great community that we call home. God bless you.[1644.88][1644.88](Applause). Mr. Chair, do you want the same thing, or are you like...
If we could go ahead and get a picture, then I'm going to pass, pass it off to Commissioner Proctor. He has a special award today. So if y'all could get a picture, then I will give Commissioner Proctor the opportunity to speak.
You're up first. All right, ready? One more for me, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Coach Simmons, if you could, return to the podium for us briefly. want to break any NCAA violations with the young athletes. Some future Rattlers problems, sure, up there taking those pictures earlier. But again, honored to be here today and thank you so much for just this recognition and we'll continue to do the best out we can to represent this great community that we call home. God bless you.
Mr. Chair, do you want the same thing or are you like?
If we could go ahead and get a picture, then I'm gonna pass, pass it off to Commissioner Proctor. He has a special award today. So if y'all could get a picture, then I will give Commissioner Proctor the opportunity to speak.
You're up first.
Coach Simmons, if you could, return to the podium force briefly.
This is Chairman of Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, here in the dais of County Commission. Today, you saw the video and Coach Simmons, I need to tell you that not only did the County Commission take note of this extraordinary effort, your leadership, Athletic Department, FAMU, but this year, the Inter-Civic Council of the Southern Christian Leadership Council also noted not only the turnaround season, but the huge victory and the lessons that were taught and conveyed to student athletes following the request that we adjust that game in North Carolina. No mercy was rendered, we rode up there and destroyed the North Carolina Aggies, beat them down, and we came back and immediately got off the bus and went to fight another foe. And all of that context serves to strike the conscience of those who serve in the Southern Christian Leadership Council. And so, on Sunday night, we miss your presence, but the Chairman of County Governance permitted me an opportunity to utilize this forum because it's in the same spirit that we give you this Model of the King Award. Excellence in Service Award presented to Coach Willie Simmons, Florida A&amp;M University Head Football Coach, in recognition of service to the community presented by the Inter-Civic Council of the Southern Christian Leadership Council, dated January 20th, 2019. Coach, we are honored to present this to you. God bless you.
Football coaches don't smile, they look like...
Congratulations, Coach Simmons. We appreciate the job you're doing of not only creating a great team, but creating great young men. Commissioner Minor, yield to our proclamation at this time for another champion to recognize. This is a...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's with great honor to welcome the North Florida Christian Eagles football team. All the football teams here.
Did Deion make it out? Is Deion here? Let me see Deion, okay.
All right. The team here won their eighth championship, a Class 2A state championship. It's the eighth overall, the first one since 2011. And these guys are great. I went to go see them at, at their school last week, just a great, a great team. And I don't know if Christian Maddox has any comment on this, but they're, they're, the offense is great, but the defense and special teams are great, too. They really scored. You guys did a great job during the playoffs, right? The four playoff games? And these guys are also successful, not just on the field, but off the field, too. Just one example, where's, where's EC? EC Presnell has been accepted and will be going to West Point, so. All right, well, without, without further delay, let me go ahead and read the proclamation. You guys, let me go ahead and get started here. Whereas the North Florida Christian School Eagles football team won the 2018 Florida High School Athletic Association Class 2A State Championship. And whereas NFC captured the state title by beating defending champ Hailea Shempagnat Catholic 28 to 20. And whereas this is NFC's first FHSAA state title since 2011 and eighth overall. And whereas this year's team overcame mid-season adversity and injuries to finish 9-4, winning five of their last six games, including all four games in the FHSAA 2A Championship playoffs. And whereas NFC's football coach is Steve Price, school administrator is Dr. Tom Phillips, and athletic administrator is Mike Posey. And whereas NFC has been supporting families in the Leon County, Big Bend area since 1966. Where, and whereas the 2018 2A FHSAA state championship team includes 14 seniors, now therefore be proclaimed by the County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we recognize and honor the North Florida Christian School football team for its outstanding season and accomplishments dated this 22nd day of January 2019. And Coach Steve Price wanted to say a few words.
We'd like to thank the Commissioners for this tremendous honor. It is a tremendous honor to represent Leon County and the city of Tallahassee as statewide. And it was a great year and, and we just appreciate all the support that we have gotten consistently from this community over the many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. And where's DeAngelo? All right, DeAngelo. DeAngelo Mitchell is one of the captains, he wanted to say a few words, too.
I would just like to thank the County Commissioners for inviting us here today. And I just want to say it was a great season, glad to support Leon County, and go Eagles.
Great to have you all here. Let's go ahead and, if you don't mind, let's go ahead and go in front of the guys here.
Okay, you can all look at me now, please? Just got it, okay.
Okay, cool, woo-hoo, all right. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize EC Presnell. He's a former Fort Braden pioneer. He got his feet wet out at Fort Braden. I'm real proud of EC. Way to go.
Talking everything he knows.
I wish I could take credit for everything he does, well. All right. Give them a minute to clear out. All right, at this time, I think we're prepared to move on with the consent agenda. Mr. Administrator, are there any items pulled from the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 12 has been pulled by Commissioner Minor. And there he is.
We'll give him a minute to congratulate the team and he's back. Commissioner Minor. Do I have a motion to...
Move staff's recommendation.
Move staff's recommendation to approve the remainder of the...
Yeah.
Yeah, on the remaining consent items. Do we have a second? Second. So moved by Commissioner Loeg, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. On the remaining items, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, motion passes. Item 12, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, we just dispensed with item 12. That was the one that was pulled. We have no speakers on that item, just in case there were any questions. I didn't hear the need to do that, so that...
So we have, okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Loeg, with Commissioner Minor recusing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by the same sign, motion passes 6 to 1 with Commissioner Minor accusing. Moving on to our assistance to be heard on non-agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got three speaker cards in at this time. The first one is Bart Bibbler.
All right. Mr. Bibbler, good to see you. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Bart Bibbler. I live at 3673 Mossy Creek Lane in Southwood. I come before you today to, to make a declaration and also to, to offer some assistance. I refuse to accept Tallahassee being called the worst city and not doing something about it. Two years ago, a study sponsored by the United Way found that Tallahassee has the number one location when it comes to the gap between the rich and the poor. I want to join Mark Wilson, President of the Florida Chamber, who spoke at the recent Tallahassee Chamber's annual breakfast and said that the 32304 ZIP code is our rallying cry. I want to join Commissioner Bill Proctor, who asked Mayor John Daley at the recent Network of Entrepreneurs and Business Advocates Luncheon to participate in a 32304 ZIP code summit. Over a year ago, my letter to the, my letter to the editor in the Democrats stated that we need a web-based hub of public engagement, acronym HOPE, for improving race relations and crime prevention to enable the public to know what's going on, to participate, and to have easy access to resources. The hub would have links to many partners involved so that they can share their activities and resources and get their message out on what they're doing and how the community can help. My new company, IHOPE Inc., is pleased to offer to assist in organizing the 32304 ZIP code summit with no charge for services and instead through voluntary community support. Our community has a diversity of opinions about these issues and they should all be heard. Let's try to get our metrics and facts agreed to before the next election cycle, where politics spin the data about our community. Our community can show others how to have civil discourse with fact-based information driving the way forward. My hope is that other communities will want to do the same. I share with you just one quote from Dr. Martin Luther King. "The ultimate tragedy is not the oppression and cruelty by the bad people, but the silence over that by the good people." So my declarations are as follows. I won't be silent about racism in my community. I refuse to accept Tallahassee being called the nation's worst city and not doing something about it. I ask you to join me in shattering the silence. I'm making it my job to improve race relations and crime prevention in Tallahassee, Leon County, and I offer my assistance in organizing a ZIP code 32304 summit. Thanks for your consideration.
All right, Commissioner Proctor.
Chairman Commissioners, I support Mr. Bibbler's comments. We've met previously. I know that a few years ago Harvard and University of Toronto announced that ours was the most economically segregated community in America. And then we found recently, I think last year, we learned that 32304 is the most impoverished ZIP code coupled with having the lowest reading scores in the state of Florida. And sometimes traditional approaches to non-traditional problems don't work. And I'm hopeful that in our conversations with Mr. Bibbler, that just perchance that this might be something that government in its traditional swag of, of all of the proper this and that and the proper, that we may need to do a little wildcat mission and to step outside the typical chambers of commerce and the more typical city-county reactions. So to the extent that Mr. Bibbler has been willing to organize and to foster a summit, I think it takes the burden off of this commission and the city commission from perhaps appearing to cherry pick favor toward a particular area of need in the community. And therefore, as a singular private entity, it may well be somewhat less awkward that he's able to do the deep dive and perhaps the findings, our participation, our being a collaborative, interested partner. He may come up with some poignant solutions which we might engage. But I think that this approach and effort would do a lot to not tie up the resources of county per se, but it allows us also to be sort of a next step up on what to do with the findings. But to be the, the fact finder and the problem resolutor might well be a big ask and task. So I wanted the commission to know, unless you have some objections or something, that as the commissioner who's district and Commissioner Minor, that 32304 falls in, this is an issue. And I'm hopeful that the County Commission would have a Model of the King-type spirit in heart that those who are the least within Leon County and through a measurable degree the least in the state of Florida, that we might be aggressive in supporting this approach, this methodology. And I can't speak for the board because you may want the county to take the lead, I don't know. But inasmuch as his interest has been expressed to me, I'm willing to ride and to be a ride or die partner with Mr. Bibbler in his efforts going forward. So I just wanted to express that to the board. You may have a different idea.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. We'll see another Commissioners in queue to speak. We have additional speakers on non-agenda items.
The next speaker card is Mickey Britt.
Mr. Britt, good afternoon, sir. Want to remind you, we have three minutes. I'm sure you remember.
I need more than that.
All right. We've got three on the schedule, Mr. Britt.
I've been here.
If you could...
I've escaped two times to be able to be here. I just got out of the hospital yesterday. It's that important to me to be here and enlighten you how stupid the government thinks we are. My name is Mickey Britt, I reside at 447...
Before we... Okay, thank you.
447 Millwood Lane, Tallahassee, 32...
Thank you so much.
312. And if government thinks I'm stupid, stupid, but oh, no, they didn't just include me, they think you stupid, too. You can't think for yourself. Ain't that amazing? Land of the free, liberty, and we're unable to think for ourselves and make a wrong decision. Excuse me? It says First Amendment, we got free speech. Never heard of anybody could talk freely about the speech and didn't have a right to think for themselves. They got a right to think, they got to use reason and logic. And they decide, you know what? Think I'm through some drugs today. That's their right, it's their body. But our government says, oh, no, we think for you, we put you in prison. Now let's do an interview. Now let's do an interview. I love this. Hey, Jose, I see you in prison. Yeah, I hear. What they got you for? Oh, I do the drugs. Really? Did you harm anybody? Oh, no, no, I just buy some drugs. You consume anything? No, 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 I just, I have some. What you gonna do with them? Well, maybe it make me feel good. But this is a good country, the American, they put me in this place called prison, and they feed me, they clothe me, they provide me health care. They're a wonderful country. I don't get to go nowhere, but this is a free country, freedom. Well, no, no, wait, let me think. Maybe we are police state, but the American, they very good to me. They keep me here, and all of them fools out there in the public, they take their tax dollars and pay the private prisons to keep me here. Well, what about your roommate over there, old Jimbo Jackson? Oh, Jimbo, he good man, good man. How many years Jimbo getting? Oh, he get thirty years. What? Thirty years? What did he do? Oh, he had drug possession. He killed somebody, robbed? No, Jimbo got good job. He's just what they call addict, kind of like a drug. And our government, they say, we take care of Jimbo three times, he's gone. So we put Jimbo in prison, we keep him here thirty years, thirty years, and when he get out of prison, he be about sixty-five, seventy-year-old, but he gonna get him a job as a rocket scientist or politician. We're really rehabilitating, and all of you fools sitting out there going, hey, 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 we put Jimbo in prison, we put Jose in prison, and we're paying for it, yay for us. How stupid can we be? You have a right to your body, it's yours, and the government is taking your tax dollars and giving it to private prisons instead of doing infrastructure and health care and you, sir, and you, and you, and you, and me. I'm taking some action, 'cause I'm gonna die, I know I'm gonna die, but by God, I may be Patrick Henry, you give me liberty or give me death. You're not gonna tell Mickey Britt what he can possess or what he can consume as a free human being, and you not go to the governor's office, to the mayor's office, to the senator's office, to the president, and not say, we are raping and breaking the American people as a disparate?
Thank you, Mr. Britt. Your three minutes are up at this time. Thank you, sir.
And it's a shame we can't have conversations to prove this because I'm right and I've had a federal suit, and I'm gonna win for you.
Thank you, sir. And for the record, I'd like to make sure the record includes that Jimbo Jackson has not been arrested and placed in jail three separate times.
For the record, I have been arrested, and I did not see you in jail those three times. I want to say that for the record.
I agree with that, Reverend Sam.
My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way, but I've served time at Madison, Perry, Blackwater, Hamilton. Lost, almost lost my life at Perry, so I think I'm equipped to talk about and qualified to talk about prison. First off, I want to know why is his name Jose and not Billy, not Johnny? Because I've met a lot of Billies, Johnnies, and Peters on them same bunks that I laid on. So that was my first question. My second question is, I don't want a government that will allow me to put something in my body to oppress me and allow me to lay on a bunk and a man tell me when to eat, when not to eat, where to go, where not to go, and work me for free. Very sorry, I'm just totally changed what I wanted to talk about, that I felt insulted. I really felt insulted for 1.6 million individuals who are fighting for the right to vote. I felt insulted. I've got one minute to talk about something that I really wanted to talk about, and that's we have a problem in our community, Mr. Dozier, and I've been coming to you, I've been coming to Mayor, I've been coming to you all, and that's about two major calamities that seem to oppress individuals that look like me, that come from an institution who have made mistakes, and we still are finding difficulties in addressing this certain population. I just wish you, if you'd just give me thirty seconds, I'd appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, we gave our previous speaker that additional time. You're welcome to it.
Okay. We've got to address, we've got to address this, and the way we miss Christian Dozier, I like talking to you because you'll give me a smile when I need one, and I need one today. I suffered a stroke on Christmas Eve, so I gotta be careful and not let too many people ruffle my feathers, and Nick, you know that ain't easy for Stanley. And so what we have, the calamity, FSU Criminology Department, Mr. Steve Hearn, a very good friend of mine, has pointed out to me that individuals like myself, when we have good education and a fair-paying job, Mr. Minor, our chances of success is eighty-three percent. And that's not 100, but hey, that's pretty darn good in my book. But the calamity is, we can never match, we are talking, but there's no reality in matching those two together. And so what I'm asking for, I don't want the beautiful video of how we gonna do it. I want to live it. I want to experience collaboration. We just had a very in-depth conversation of changing the name from technical school to college, you know, where everybody gets an award that gets on the team. I'm, Mr. Jimbo, I'm tired of the fluff games, and so what I want to do is, I have a plan that's called HELP, hardship, employment, and entrepreneurship for low-income people. Because the sad thing, as smart as I am, Mr. Vince, because of my background, even my friends here in Tallahassee who want to give me a job can't. And it's too many of us out there, and we are still dying. We had homicides this last weekend, and I don't, I thank you, I know I've pushed my limit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sims, we appreciate that.
Final speaker card, Commissioners, Delatrie Hunter.
If you would, if you would, uh, name and address for the record.
Well, before I start, I want it there to be discussion, so do I need to wait? Because there not supposed to be any discussion on these?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, I didn't...
There's not supposed to be discussion on these items, so do I need to wait till the end?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to our general business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item, item number sixteen, Commissioners, presents and seeks your acceptance of the Hurricane Michael after-action report. Commissioners, I'm going to provide a brief overview for you, and I'm going to be followed in more detail by key members of our staff in just a moment. But Commissioners, to start off, you all know all too well by now that consistent with our CEMP, our Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, that we compile an after-action report within 120 days following an incident like this, an emergency incident. It's hard to believe, but today marks ninety-nine days since the deactivation of the Emergency Operations Center on October 15th, and so we're providing this report to you today. As you know, Commissioners, 2018 was the third consecutive year which Leon County experienced major impacts from a hurricane. Following Hurricanes Hermine and Irma, in the last two years, we prepared comprehensive after-action reports, which identified a combined, if you can imagine, 205 findings and 145 recommendations involving major enhancements to our preparedness, response, and recovery capabilities. As we reported to you back in May, Commissioners, we implemented all 145 of those recommendations from the previous two after-action reports prior to Michael. And without question, those recommendations were critical to our success in our operations during Hurricane Michael. The report before you tonight, Commissioners, contains eighty-three findings and sixty-eight more recommendations that we will immediately begin to put in place. As you know, Commissioners, Michael, and as you've heard many times by now, was a historic and unprecedented storm. In fact, it was the third most powerful storm to make landfall in the continental U.S. It was also the single most powerful storm to ever impact the Florida Panhandle and Big Ben, and of course, our region suffered catastrophic damage as a result. As such, Hurricane Michael required our most extensive activation of resources and personnel in our community's history, even more than Irma. As you're aware, Commissioners, and you're all very well aware, the storm downed thousands of trees, in summary, downed thousands of trees, blocked more than a thousand roads through Leon County, caused widespread power outages to 95% of our utility customers county-wide, damaged nearly 1,200 homes in Leon County. It required a massive debris collection effort, which you'll hear more about in a little while, involving more than a million cubic yards of debris, over five times the volume from Hurricane Hermine. However, Commissioners, fortunately, Leon County emerged with no major flooding issues and, more importantly, no loss of life as a direct result of the storm. As you'll hear in today's presentation, we executed all of our emergency plans and our protocols and our partnerships during Hurricane Michael, which were reinforced and strengthened based on the lessons learned, as I mentioned, from Hurricane Hermine and Irma, to meet all the needs of our citizens and to quickly return our community to normal. In a moment, Commissioners, you'll hear from Andy Johnson, Kevin Peters, and Matt Cavell, who will summarize just a few of the highlights from the very voluminous report in front of you, and will identify key recommendations. Of course, we'll be able to answer any questions that you have on anything. I've also asked Alan Rosenzweig to close with a summary of funding recommendations included in the agenda item, which we can talk more about to ensure that we have adequate cash flow, as I've talked to you all in your briefings about, until we are reimbursed from FEMA, not only from this storm, but from the previous two. While today's presentation, Commissioners, will just scratch the surface, the after-action report before you contains a thorough analysis of all phases of our emergency operations relative to Michael. Before I hand it off to Andy, Commissioners, I'd like to take a moment to thank our county employees. More than 530, it's 530 county employees were activated during Hurricane Michael and provided full coverage in the 194 consecutive hours that the EOC remained operational and that staff were in the field. I also want to thank the board for your continued support and engagement throughout this event, and I want to include a special thanks, as I have in the past, to Commissioner Maddox, who was chair, and reminds me often that he was chair during the event, and was always available and accessible to us, which enabled us to act quickly and efficiently. Commissioners, you have continuously placed a very high priority on our community's resilience, and I believe the after-action report before you reflects that high priority. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Andy Johnson to provide an overview, and as I mentioned, you'll hear from just a couple others that'll follow Andy's brief presentation. Andy?
Well, thank you very much, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here to present this year's, what's become an annual after-action report. As the county administrator mentioned, after any large-scale emergency such as Hurricane Michael, we do an extensive review of our operations to reinforce the things that worked well and also to identify specific improvements to continue to become even stronger and more resilient during the next emergency. The after-action report we're presenting you today reflects the results of that review following Hurricane Michael. As you know and as the report describes in detail, we've made extensive efforts in recent years to make our community and Leon County government more prepared and more resilient. Recommendations that you found in the Hurricanes Hermine and Irma after-action reports included major, major enhancements, such as returning Leon County Emergency Management back to the county, partnering with Leon County schools to enhance our sheltering capabilities, strengthening our debris plans and operations, and adding more resources in the field to help collect debris following the storm, connecting our citizens with a single source of timely, accurate, and vetted emergency public information, and many, many more. Today, Commissioners, you'll hear more about those specific improvements and exactly how they contributed to the success of our operations following Hurricane Michael. As Vince mentioned, this after-action report contains eighty-three findings and sixty-eight specific recommendations for improvement. Of course, we're not going to address all of them today in today's presentation, however, we will highlight several that involve significant enhancements to our plans and protocols and operations, and of course, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have along the way. So today, Commissioners, for today's presentation, I'll provide a quick overview of the Hurricane Michael after-action report, and then I'll hand it off to Kevin Peters to discuss a recap of Hurricane Michael as well as our operations during the activation. And finally, Matt Cavell will highlight some of the specific improvements that I just mentioned in more detail and how they helped us to be better prepared during Hurricane Michael, and highlight a few of the specific, very high-level, major findings and recommendations included in this after-action report before you that will help us to become, again, even more prepared and resilient for the next emergency. So to begin, Commissioners, immediately following Hurricane Michael, and while we were still just in the recovery phase, we began the work of compiling this after-action report. And just to remind the board, when we compile these reports, we do a deep dive involving all of our Leon County staff, our partner agencies involved in the response and recovery operations, as well as citizens to get their feedback and observations and their experiences during the activation, which we then incorporate into the after-action report. Following Michael, we held six of these debriefing meetings with county staff and partner agencies, as well as one community listening session where we invited citizens to share their experiences with us and how they were impacted in different ways by the storm and how we can continue to serve our community and our citizens even better. Just as a quick overview of the report, Commissioners, this slide shows how the report itself is structured. Section one provides an introduction and discusses the structure of emergency management in Leon County. Section two discusses our various emergency plans, training protocols, and the county's efforts throughout the year to keep our community prepared and informed, and this includes the enhancements that we've made to our outreach capabilities in recent years, such as the Emergency Information Portal, the Citizens Connect mobile app, and training with our community partners that we do on an ongoing basis throughout the year. Section three provides an overview of Hurricane Michael itself, its impacts and preparations that we made here in Leon County prior to the storm, both in the Emergency Operations Center and in the field. Section four talks about our operations during the Michael activation and the recovery that followed, and this is where we discuss things like our sheltering operations, debris collection, comfort stations, points of distribution, and things of that nature. Section five has some additional discussion about support that was provided by Leon County personnel in the areas of things like staffing, IT resources, facilities, and other things of that nature. And finally, section six concludes the report. So with that, Commissioners, as a kind of a quick overview of how the report itself is structured, I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to Kevin Peters to walk us through our activation.
Mr. Chairman, county administrator, Commissioners, thank you this afternoon for the time to discuss Hurricane Michael with you, and Michael was an interesting storm, but I did want to go back a little bit before all we've talked about, the near-category-five landfall, and take you back to Friday, October 5th at 2:00 p.m., the last tropical weather outlook before we all left for that weekend. The National Hurricanes Center advised that a tropical depression could form by late this weekend or early next week in the Northwest or Caribbean Sea or in the Gulf of Mexico. Regardless of tropical cyclone formation, this disturbance will continue to produce torrential rainfalls, primarily to portions of Central America and the Yucatan Peninsula. So that was what we were walking into the weekend in... So that was what we were walking into the weekend and the early week with, was just potential for a tropical depression to form over the weekend, maybe the end of the weekend or the early next week. As we know, once this storm formed, it rapidly changed our outlook and what we would expect from tropical weather. By Sunday morning, 11:55 a.m., shortly after the 11:00 a.m. update, satellite indications were that Tropical Storm Michael had become a hurricane, a Category 1 hurricane. The hurricane hunters had not even been scheduled to fly the storm at that point, so even the National Hurricane Center's hurricane hunters were scrambling to activate and get in motion to start getting better data so the forecasts could improve on the storm, and something we dealt with the entire time from the storm's formation on the 7th through landfall on the 10th. And again, by 11:00 a.m. Monday morning, when everybody was back to normal work, schedule hours, we had a Category 1 storm 75 miles an hour, and a hurricane watch was already up for the Gulf Coast from the Alabama, Florida border, all the way around to the Suwannee River. Now, a key point there, we had already begun activities in the Emergency Operations Center on Sunday. We were not just beginning at 11:00 a.m. on Monday. Very well-practiced in this routine of responding to storms. So from our slide, this was a very active storm. It intensified quickly three days from being named to landing in the Gulf Coast as a Category 4 at 155 miles an hour. Its minimum sustained pressure, that's more a factor of the overall intensity of the storm, was 919 millibars. That was the third most intense storm in Atlantic tropical history. The only two stronger at this time are the 1935 Labor Day storm that ravaged the Keys and Hurricane Camille from 1969. The power of Michael with respect to central pressure was more than Katrina, and it was more than Andrew, Katrina being the fourth most intense now and Andrew being the fifth most. So as stated a little earlier, Michael was absolutely the most intense storm to hit Florida, at least since 1992 with Andrew, and definitely since the 1800s for the Panhandle of Florida. With respect to the season overall, the forecast was pretty good this year for storms. We were not too far above average. The National Hurricane Center on June 1st called for 10 to 16 named storms, five to six hurricanes, of those, one to four being major hurricanes, Category 3 or higher. Additionally, Colorado State, their forecast was 14 named storms, six hurricanes, two major. What we actually saw were 15 named storms, eight hurricanes, two of those being major hurricanes. Florence earlier in the season, which weakened right at landfall, and Michael, as we know, which intensified at landfall. On an interesting note, this was the fourth year in a row that we've had a pre-hurricane season storm. We did have Alberto earlier this season that went across the Gulf of Mexico, also making landfall in western Florida. So while it was a very active season for the Panhandle of Florida, including our area, all in all, it was very near normal, it was within the expected forecast range for the Now, we had been monitoring the storm well before October 8th, and actually, we had some staff activity on October 7th, but we went into our full activation mode, beginning on October 8th of last year. We were in activation status for 194 hours. As part of the buildup to the impact of the storm, over 70,000 sandbags were distributed at sandbag sites for our Public Works Department. We had numerous public information and communication activities, over 100 Facebook updates, 118 tweets, 300 radio spots, as well as hourly updates with WFSU Radio between October 10th and 11th. As the county administrator mentioned, over 530 county employees were activated. We had more hundreds of partner agencies. On any given shift, we had about 120 entities that were represented in some way, 120 personnel in the EOC, representing over 58 entities in the EOC. Some other facts, in the EOC, over 3,400 citizens' information line calls were answered by staff in the call center during the activation. Six shelters were opened with over 1,500 shelteries and over 200 pets. Post-disaster 10 points of distribution, damage assessment. We had 21 two-person crews from city and county staff that went throughout the entire community to assess the impact of the storm. Six cut-and-toss crews were deployed to storm staging areas before landfall. As you heard, over 1,000 county roads cleared from EMS during the timeframe of October 10th to 12th. 496 requests for emergency medical services were made, the peak being overnight, October 10th through the morning of October 11th, where they saw a 72 percent above-average peak in call volumes, and our comfort station saw over 1,800 visitors between October 12th and 14th, and they were able to provide 4,000 bottles of water and over 1,400 snacks, in addition to valuable information to help citizens recover. So with this intense as Michael was for the western Panhandle, it was still a very strong storm here. It was not a Category 4 in Leon County, but we're right at the threshold of Category 1, very low-end Category 1 hurricane, which proves that all hurricanes are bad. I mean, from what we've seen, the million cubic yards of storm debris, 1,200 homes damaged, definitely Category 1s are nothing to sneeze at. Anybody who says it's just a Category 1, if you ever hear that again, that's the most dangerous attitude to take towards hurricanes. There is no just A. All hurricanes are serious and need to be treated as such. Some interesting facts on the storm, as you can see, our maximum wind gusts, relatively close meteorologically speaking, from Hermine at 64 miles an hour, Irma at 54, and Michael at 71. Generally, our sustained winds in the mid-to-upper 40s where we were able to detect the winds. But one of the biggest factors in this situation, probably compared to Irma, is the 12 hours of the sustained tropical storm-force winds. Another four hours with winds over 40 miles an hour, you can see just the overall impact with the debris that was generated, and just kind of how Hermine was so much worse than Irma also was the proximity to the center of the circulation, as it made landfall much closer. While it had a shorter duration of those four hours, again, that was a higher debris incident than Irma was. So it's proximity to the center of the storm as well as exposure to winds, the long-term exposure. Again, no major flooding experienced during the storm. Another tidbit, there were no tornadoes spun by the storm as it made its track across Florida. So that's another positive for us, and most importantly, no loss of life in Leon County. Just a highlight of some of the activities before the storm, coordinating the operation of our risk shelters and our special needs shelters in partnership with the County Department of Health. We had over 1,500 shelteries at our risk shelters during the height of the storm and over 200 pets sheltered. For comparison, to Irma, again, a little bit of a different situation, 11 shelters open, 3,000 shelteries, about half that number were out-of-town shelteries from south Florida. Again, not the same situation we had last year, so the numbers are actually comparable to what we would have expected to have seen during this evacuation, that 1,500 plus-or-minus number, kind of comparable to the number of evacuees that were local during Irma. At the special needs shelter, staffed by medical staff from the county health department, there were 138 special needs citizens that sheltered there along with their caregivers. That does serve as a regional capacity. We do have people from Waukulla County and Franklin County, and occasionally Taylor County, depending on storm direction, that we partner with to make sure that they have the medical care and shelter they need. Talked a little bit about this one already, the road clearing, over 1,000 roads that were blocked. That accounts for nearly half of the county-maintained roads. Those were cleared in relatively quick order due to some of the improvements after Irma with power restoration. Again, updates to those plans from City Tallahassee and Talquin Electric. City Tallahassee had 80 crews in town pre-landfall this time, which helped them tremendously. Both Talquin and City of Tallahassee had hundreds of mutual aid responders from about 50 different cities, over 15 different states that were brought in on this storm, and they were able to get full restoration within the city system within a week of landfall. Talquin was a day behind, so a week and a day, still pretty good numbers. All right. And our comfort station at the main library, again, we had over 1,800 visitors. They were able to distribute 4,000 bottles of water and 14,000 snacks to the citizens who came there seeking disaster recovery information, working with the City of Tallahassee and the Florida National Guard, county personnel. We operated 10 points of distribution following the storm, which are points where citizens could come and get water, MREs, as well as ice following the storm. 500,000 bottles of water were distributed, 265,000 MREs, and 7,000 bags of ice. And again, we've heard the debris estimates, over a million cubic yards of debris picked up. Some of the improvements that helped make that possible were the county's acquisition of two grapple trucks, the updated debris and monitoring contracts with our vendors to require a minimum number of staffing when those contracts are activated, and again, the assignment of electric crew, A electric crew from City Tallahassee and Talquin to assist with the cut-and-toss efforts at immediate road clearance. And that concludes the summary of emergency response and recovery operations. I know it was a lot of numbers. I'm sure not everybody has heard all those numbers, so we want to make sure you have them all. And as a point of reference, as we hear a little more about some of the key recommendations from the emergency management point of view, we've begun already looking at those. We can tell you that from our office, 12 of those we consider in progress, and two we've actually been able to note as complete from our point of view as they are dealt with as updates to checklists for activities to take in future storms. With that, I will turn it over to Matt Cavell with our enhancements.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Chairman, Commissioners. So I want to give a brief overview on the work that we had done in preparation after Hermine and Irma that made us better prepared for Michael, and how Michael was a different storm that tested us in different ways and is going to lead to improvements for the future storm, which we know is not necessarily a question of when, but rather what name it's going to have in September, October of this year. So to that point, we had 205 findings and 145 recommendations that the county administrator had said that led us to our disaster response and recovery for Michael. Now, I could recite them all, but I think that Mickey Britt might not like that, so we're going to move on to returning to the big points from Hermine and Irma. From Hermine, one of the most significant improvements was returning Leon County Emergency Management to Leon County Government. In so doing, the county administrator developed community relations and resilience. Insofar, while that had many operational improvements, two significant points were increased and improved communication during a disaster, and that ranges from WFSU partnership for live broadcasts to an improved disaster survival guide to a Citizens Connect mobile app with now nearly 20,000 subscribers. And then in addition, it led to greater community resilience building. So that took one of our most significant events, and arguably the state of Florida's largest resilience event in Build Your Bucket, where we had a modest 120 or so in 2015, to 2,000 people from our community seeking resources and aid to be better prepared for disaster, the most recently in June of this year, which left them in a better state of preparedness for Michael. In addition, we improved sheltering significantly following Irma, and this is going to be a fine point because Irma's sheltering improvements led to the largest, during Irma was the largest sheltering activation in Leon County history. For Michael, it was a sheltering activation that had to occur in the quickest timeframe possible. So as you heard from Kevin, the storm itself went from a depression that is going to affect the Yucatan to 127 hours later, some of the disastrous footage we saw in a video earlier on Mexico City Beach, and then also what affected our community. So the nature of sheltering led us to have a more clear agreement with the American Red Cross of Expectations, in addition to involving Leon County schools participating in the sheltering program, which makes a bunch of sense. Their personnel are most familiar with those buildings, they have a commitment to serve that community, and they know where the resources are for those locations. So that increased sheltering from Irma led to a better response for Michael and will lead to future improvements following Michael. In addition, debris collection, we've touched on that, but the improvements following Irma led to a significant contract renegotiation that says we need resources in our community to pick up the debris as fast as possible. Now, as fast as possible, none of us would have guessed that the next storm would be five times greater, over a million cubic yards. Now, we say all that, and we don't really know what that means, millions a lot, but out of a million cubic yards, if you stack it all up on a football field from end zone to end zone, it'd be the tallest building here in our county. That is a tallest building of debris here in this community. Now, because I wasn't sure if any FSU women's soccer team players were still going to be here, I did the quick math about what a soccer field would be filled with. It wouldn't be the largest building, but it'd be about 22 stories. So, see... I did, I asked Alan, actually, and he got it for me. So that is a significant amount of debris, five times as much debris, which was picked up in the exact same time period as what we did for Hermine and Irma. That is not something to sneeze at, and that was a result of the improvements and enhancements. In addition, all of those things put together, the improved communications, the resilience, and things I have not mentioned, led to the FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, as well as the Federal Alliance for Safe Homes, FLSH, designating us the nation's first hurricane-strong community, which is to say that the building codes are done right, your resilience efforts are done right, your public information is put into place right, you are a model and prototypical community for not only the state but the nation. Go forth and do good things, and Michael will be one of those most significant tests for you of that designation. And I'm proud to say that we made a strong response to disaster even stronger. Now, moving into the key findings and recommendations from this after-action report. These are laid out proceeding from the beginning of the after-action report to the end, and they're only the highlights. Again, all the materials in front of you, more than 100 pages make up the after-action report, but just a few of these findings and recommendations to highlight now at this point would be to begin with National Weather Service meteorologist. So, one of the most significant things we had in the Emergency Operations Center during the disaster activation was real-time interpretation of one of the most rapidly intensifying storms in U.S. history. So to understand the trajectory of that storm, the wind speed damage, what would it mean for our community, having a representative from the National Weather Service and the Emergency Operations Center paid dividends. That is actually going to be a standard program that we will coordinate with the National Weather Service going forward. Anytime that we activate the Emergency Operations Center, we will submit a request to the National Weather Service to have a meteorologist on site because, again, it gave incredible real-time information that we could put into the field with our public safety agencies and experts. The next one is broadly two points about sheltering. Now, again, the nature of the storm is different. Irma leading to 3,000 people that needed to be sheltered, half of which were not from our community, to Michael, 1,500 of which, a good number, also not from our community, coming from the west side of the state rather than the east and south side of the state. There are opportunities, again, to have the supplies and to be able to open the doors and be turnkey-ready at the shelters. These are improvements that we can continue to work with our partners at Leon County Schools and Red Cross, because, again, the truncated nature and strength of that storm requires improvements. In addition, anytime, and this is a remarkable revelation, anytime you open a risk shelter, you're going to need a host shelter. So what we're going to do in continuous operation, the Emergency Operations Center, is work with public safety agencies, specifically our Mass Care Sheltering Group, and anytime we open risk shelters, we will contemplate the demobilization of those risk shelters and the transition to host sheltering in a way that is best for the shelteries and in a way that is best for the public safety agencies involved. In addition, one other point about sheltering is special needs sheltering. While we had no issues with special needs for Hurricane Michael, here is the one significant thing we know. For special needs sheltering, our special needs registry list that we maintain for people that need specialized medical care and electricity to continue to function grows every year. Our population grows, our population ages. We know that we need to contemplate improvements to special needs sheltering capacity in the future. Now, that's handled in two separate ways. One, working with Florida High as they renovate the space in which to find increased capacity at what is the special needs shelter now. In addition, we have the opportunity to add a generator to a site to have an alternate special needs shelter, contemplated on Orange Avenue for the Health Department, but could be other locations, to look into the opportunity to have a separate facility, should the first be damaged or should capacity be necessary. It's a significant takeaway and an improvement that we need to contemplate, not that there was an issue that needed to be addressed, but that we put on our thinking caps and thought about what it might be for this year's, next year's, or next decade's storm. Now significantly, what we had noticed is we have areas to improve coordination with our small rural communities and counties adjacent to us and across the region. Now, that exists not only in volunteers and donations management, but in other fields as well. We think that in Leon County, we're uniquely positioned with our County Emergency Management Director Kevin Peters and the role he serves on the regional level, but we are also able to do this through the professional association, FIPA, that will Florida Emergency Preparedness Association, to give us the opportunity to continue to coordinate and coach for and share best practices with our small neighboring counties, to get them the information and the procedures and best practices they need to be successful. Again, this doesn't just happen five days before a storm, this is a year-long effort. Again, this doesn't just happen five days before a storm, this is a year-long effort where it is figured into quarterly meetings and ongoing preparation efforts. In addition, we are going to, and close to closing the deal on this one, secure state-owned portable generators to store here in Leon County, which makes a bunch of sense from the state level. We give you a bunch of generators to run your intersections for Michael. You could maintain them, deploy them, use them. That means we get resources at traffic intersections and for other use into the field faster because we have those resources here locally. In addition, another topic was debris burning. In the debris burning world, or burning in general, the Florida Forest Service provides regulations and procedures by which you can burn on your property. In addition, the Florida Forest Service issues advisories about when you cannot burn for one or two, or they issue advisories about whether there's too much fuel in the field and it can cause additional wildfires. So if a debris burning pile was to be located next to a timber field or whatever the case may be, there's too much fuel in the environment, don't do that. In addition, the second one is they also have air quality advisories that they issue for the purposes of too much burning in areas. Now, we were not under set advisories issued by the Florida Forest Service for here for Leon County. However, we know that for the next storm, we can issue public information in the beginning that says that a robust debris collection, to the tune of a million cubic yards for Michael and who knows what next, will be underway. So, don't burn it, curb it. So from a public information perspective, we have the opportunity to let folks know that someone is coming. But the Florida Forest Service also issues, as you can see on the graphic, guidelines about safely burning debris for lawn refuses in their backyards. So, we will continue to educate people on what the regulations are, and we will continue to do a public information campaign early and often about debris collection and other improvements. Lastly, a couple of other points to touch on, which are still very important but do close out the after-action report. One is, the presence here of the FEMA liaisons in the Emergency Operations Center, both from the intergovernmental and the actual disaster liaison that was seated in the EOC, was incredibly helpful for getting the right aid and the right answers to questions. They joined us in public information efforts on WFSU, and they also served in regional capacity as well. We are going to recommend to the state of Florida and continue to coordinate with federal entities to say that is the right option to do for our community and seek such similar support in future disasters, because we have a template and a playbook by which it was successful. In addition, Tourism Division staff were incredibly helpful for finding vacancies for disaster survivors and other folks who came to our community, and they did that in real time, working with local hoteliers. They're going to continue to coordinate with their partners and continue that year-round to have that real-time updates to vacancies for the people who need it most. The last point, well, last two points, the OEB website, the Office of Economic Vitality, one of the things that we instituted going from Irma to Michael, but there's still opportunities to improve this and make this more robust, is one of the major questions that people ask after disaster is, what is open and where can I get food for my family? Where can I go to restaurants? Where can I get gas? The Office of Economic Vitality is uniquely positioned in the Emergency Operations Center to be able to answer those questions because they have the most current information of anyone in the community. So, they stood up for Michael, a website that had mapping and lists and other resources for people to be able to patronize businesses here locally. We can continue to invest in that, both in the public information and the architectural, technological setup of it. Then lastly, this one's a little bit in the weeds, but I think it's going to close what our regional role is. The Web EOC has been a technological backbone for mission requests to the state. It's a standard across the state, our local rural counties use it as well. That has been a critical tool to be able to get and track needs of the community. So, if you're a citizen and you have a need or a follow-up, and you call our Citizens' Information Line, of which thousands of folks do for every disaster, we have the opportunity to track that within our systems so that all our public safety agencies know. In addition, because of our unique experience and our technological support, we serve as the hub for training in the region of Web EOC use. So again, the high tech and the high touch come together for our disaster service and disaster recovery efforts. So, in that way, we'll continue to serve as a training hub for our region of how to use the digital technology to get the resources needed into the field as soon as possible. In addition to refining public information, as we talked about, because there's not anyone during any disaster that has ever said to anyone at this dais or in this room that they were too informed before a hurricane made landfall. So, out of all of those efforts and continued refinements and some of the new work in which we'll do for the findings and recommendations, which there are 68, we definitely have our work ahead of us to make us yet again even better prepared and to make a strong response to disaster even stronger. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alan Rosenzweig to talk briefly about the fiscal impacts and recommendations that were included in the agenda item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm going to briefly cover two topics for you. One will be the fiscal impact related to Hurricane Michael, and I'm going to provide at the end a brief summary of where we're at with Hermine and Irma as it relates to those reimbursement processes as well. So as you saw on the agenda item, we're about $22.1 million of exposure right now to the storm. As you've heard throughout this afternoon, a vast majority of that relates to the massive amount of debris pickup, about a million cubic yards. I think we've all heard that several times today. That is five times more than Hermine, and that is what's leading north of $20 million of the overall expenditures. The formula that we're following, as we have in the past, is we anticipate 87.5% of those funds being reimbursed to the county, and 12.5% will be expenses of the county that will not be reimbursed. So we basically need to provide cash flow until such time as FEMA does reimburse the county. And the county match, as I said, will not be reimbursed, which is about a $3 million hit to the county, and I'll explain briefly how we recommend paying for that. If we go back to October through our carryforward process, we did requests from the board, and we did establish a $13 million cap fund this year. We increased it through the carryforward process. Normally, we set it up about three to four, about three to $5 million. We did increase that in anticipation of the total expenditures. Unfortunately, the number far exceeded our anticipation even in October and has risen to the $22 million. So in total, Commissioners, what we're recommending is three approaches to do the final payments. We anticipate using our fund balances that we have on hand, and we have healthy reserves, luckily. We're going to bring that down to our recommended minimum policy levels of about 10%. That will leave us adequate funds to take care of our existing obligations. That's about $13.8 million in total we'll have of our fund balance used to pay these bills in such time as FEMA reimburses us. Second, we're lucky we had established that reserve for Amendment 1 for the passage of the homestead exemption. Luckily, the amendment didn't pass. We put $2 million aside in the current year budget. We're recommending we take those dollars and use it to fund our portion of the match, which would not be reimbursed. Again, that's only one time for the current year. The money that supports that recurring for next year's budget, we'll discuss that in the upcoming budget process. That's only the one-time dollars in the current year. The board will have an opportunity to address those future recurring dollars in the next several months when we deal with the budget. Lastly, Commissioners, we are recommending that you authorize the administrator to issue a request for proposals to establish a line of credit with a local bank. We would do that about the amount of $5.5 million. That would be able to keep, as I said previously, to leave our reserves at the appropriate level, the cash flow, and pay our obligations throughout the beginning of the year. We would do that competitively. We would anticipate the amount of time the loans would be out, be in terms of months, not years, and the rates would be extremely competitive, and we would bring that all back to the board in February for award. So we wouldn't do anything until such time as we'd have the board's final approval, but that amount of money would be available for us to keep us paying our bills up until such time as Michael's reimbursed, or until we get the property taxes in November. So we just felt that was a good policy recommendation. Lastly, Commissioners, I did want to bring you up to speed on where we're at with Hermine and Irma. Hermine, which occurred two years ago right now, I'm pleased to report, we're well in excess of 95% of all our funds being reimbursed from the federal government, and that's Hermine. We have a little less than $500,000 outstanding, but we feel ultimately that will all still be reimbursed. We're still just going through some final closeout. Irma, all of our documentation has been submitted. We've received a small amount of reimbursement at this point, under $10,000. We still have about $1.2 million outstanding, and we're waiting for final approvals. As it relates to Michael, we've been assured by our FEMA representatives and discussions with the state that the federal shutdown is not impacting at this point in time the process. We've had some very good meetings so far. We anticipate packaging up all of our documentation and have everything submitted by early spring. We've submitted a number already, but we're still going through the process. And based on the history and depending where we're at, we could be anywhere from six months to a year until we get complete reimbursement from Hurricane Michael, hence the need for the recommendations we've made. With that, Commissioners, I'll turn it back to the county administrator.
As we close, Commissioners, and open it up to you all for questions, let me just say for anyone who thinks this may be overkill, that's about the highest compliment you could ever pay. So obviously, you know, we take this task very seriously. This is not only our after-action report, but this is your official debrief after the pursuit to the comprehensive emergency management plan. And we know the most important thing that we can do, in addition to our preparation and response and recovery, is that when those winds stop blowing is to take the time to really extract every possible lesson learned from the storm to ensure that we're better prepared for the next one. So with that, Commissioners, I'm happy to turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, and we'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
All right, several Commissioners in queue to speak. Would we like to make a motion prior to that to accept staff? Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Deluge for staff recommendation. All in favor, signify, and we will...
We want to discuss.
Yeah, we'll discuss. We'll start with Deluge, then Commissioner Lindley, Commissioner Dozier, and then everyone else is in queue as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Compliments to staff. I mean, I'm a big believer that when the time chips are down, you see what people are made of, and frankly, it's been impressive. Every storm, I hate to see it happen, but we get a little bit better at how we respond and how we recover, and it's kind of hard to believe that three in a row and that level of kind of damage. Alan, you started to answer the question about the FEMA thing about, you know, have they paid back for the last two? Some of it's still out and a little bit in risk, and I assume that's just administratively working through that. I'm curious, I drove through Mexico Beach yesterday, and I'm curious for a county that size. I know this doesn't impact us, but there are neighbors. They don't have lines of credit, they don't have reserves, they probably have 20 times the hit we did. I assume, and I've just got named on the National FEMA Advisory Board, so I should know some of this, but I don't, how does, who bankrolls that? For a county like a Gulf County, is there, does FEMA, Kevin, would you know? I'm just, I mean, I feel for these people because the county's gotten run over.
I don't know the exact details, but I have heard from some of the colleagues that they're doing some of the similar things we are, looking for loans and other funding opportunities.
Hoping that FEMA will pay them back.
Yes.
Which is a bit of a roll the dice for a county that size and a bill that big.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, just to add to Commissioner Deluge's inquiry there, you know, we, in our briefings, we talked about that these are sort of, if you will, good problems that we have relative to cash flow. You're right, the first thing that they probably did was to drain down their revenues. So we talk about maintaining our revenues and keeping that buffer, our reserves, rather. They've probably depleted those and are looking for alternative revenues.
And insult to injuries, their property taxes are going to drop off a cliff, too. Okay. And then secondly, I had somebody, a reporter stopped me today and said, can you comment on the CSX not reopening? And I didn't know anything about CSX lines that are closed as a result of the storm that they're considering not reopening. Could we act, could I get kind of, I sent Christina a note and said, had she heard? And she said, no, she was in touch with CSX. But I think from a freight standpoint, from an economic development standpoint, that potentially is a problem.
Mr. Administrator?
No, we'll just, we'll get your response to that.
Okay. All right, thank you. But nice job, you guys, appreciate it.
Next in queue is Commissioner Lindley, then Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is awesome. I'm always, I'm just shocked with our love-hate relationship with the trees. At this time, we still had so much more debris down, even after the first two hurricanes had to have just cleared out so much. So, what I was wondering is, what is the status of the debris pickup now? As I drive around, I know there's still quite a bit in the community. I don't know how much of that is in the county. Are we still, like, every day out there assisting, or is that pretty much leveled out?
Our debris operations have concluded.
Pardon me?
Our debris operations concluded a few weeks ago at the conclusion of December or so, but every area was serviced at least twice.
Okay, thank you. And also about the generators, does the county have generators, generators of our own? I see that, you know, the recommendation is to secure state-owned generators and keep them around. Do we, is it just that we need more, or is this something that, I mean, what are the odds of our getting state-owned generators? Why wouldn't every county want to have those?
So we do have some generators, but not one for all important traffic intersections, for instance. So the partnership with the state, which is giving us that number, greatly increases the inventory. So we have some.
So these are, these are just for traffic management?
They can be used in other ways as well for public safety purposes.
That sort of thing?
Those require more wiring in the building to accept said generator, and that will be a separate process which we're going to pursue, as we had talked about in the recommendations and findings about special needs locations. We'll be pursuing that separately.
So that will be, I mean, there would be some money involved in that, so is that something that might come up through budget?
Yes, maybe, but HMGP, Hazard Mitigation Grant Funds and other pools of money.
Does HMGP, just refresh me?
So that's federal money made available following a disaster to help mitigate and protect life and safety.
Okay.
And that will be something that we'll be able to pursue ahead for this purpose.
Okay. And finally, I guess I just never thought of counties as needing to have a line of credit from the bank, and I guess this is the first time in a long time or ever for our county, and I just need reassurance of how that's working. And I know you've probably tried to get it through my head a couple of times already, Alan.
That's right, and I'll pave the way, Alan. But yeah, it is sort of a, and I don't want to overstate this, but sort of a nice-to-have. We could pay these costs out of cash reserves at the time, at this point, if you will. We have a minimum reserve policy in place that requires us to keep 10% in reserves. Because of the duration of the time and because of cash flow in terms of getting reimbursed, we think it would just be prudent not to go below those 10% for a few reasons. One, we've, that it roughly contemplates the amount of outstanding bills day-to-day that we have to pay and that sort of thing, but also, what if another event occurs? So we believe that a short-term, very short-term, months, not years, short-term line of credit is just a prudent move, and we're in a position to be able to do this, again, as sort of a nice-to-do. And it's not a move out of desperation or anything, it's just simply a prudent cash flow tool for us.
And we're going to try to work on that immediately? I mean, and you said that this isn't related to the federal government's furlough regarding FEMA reimbursement, and you said that's still proceeding as usual, so this is not connected to that? This isn't the county upfronting money that we should be getting from the feds?
That's correct.
On point, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
The assumption is, too, you guys have looked at drawing the reserves down versus the cost of money versus what our money's invested in.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Go ahead.
Okay. No, I just had those questions, and I appreciate your answers, and wanted to thank the staff, too. I am just stunned and so in awe and impressed of everybody in the staff, how hard everyone worked, including our chairman over here. Thank you so much, it's just amazing. I'm so proud of this county. Thank you.
Commissioner Dozier, then Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Minor, and then back to Commissioner Deluge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just echoing the comments, truly appreciate everything the staff at the MS County Administrator. Seeing a third report in just over two years is quite remarkable, and over 240 items, I don't have the number right in my mind, there's 205 findings. So you guys have done a great job reading through the report, and I appreciate, Matt, you picking up on the coad and explaining that a little bit and the volunteer services. So just to start with that, I had raised this issue in October when our first meeting after the storm, being the Commission's appointee on the Regional Planning Council, hearing from a lot of those counties and others, I know we all were, that there were some challenges with getting the right relief supplies to the right place and some of the coordination. So I really appreciate what you all have done, what you've explained in the report, and just to take this opportunity, last week's ARPC meeting, I was made vice chair on your behalf, but we're also going to establish a task force looking at regional economic develop, or I'm sorry, hurricane impacts, both immediate and long-term recovery. They truly appreciate, the board at ARPC and others, how much we've done, and I think the report has a lot of information that will help the other counties and help all of us assess how to strengthen their ability to respond and coordinate better with us, because we are providing a lot to those other counties. So just wanted to share that, that it truly is appreciated, not just the AMU Athletics and everyone else who did the donation, but what our staff's done. So with that, I just had a couple of questions. I think you referenced the shutdown, Commissioner Deluge, and I brought up this question in briefing as well. I've been hearing, you know, National Weather Service is still open, others like that, but there are some communities around the state that are dealing with shutdown problems as it relates to potential flooding or other things. Maybe USGS is monitoring... Maybe USGS is monitoring, or supposed to be monitoring gauges, and they're not because of the shutdown. Do we have any impacts on preparing for hurricane season at all that you all have seen due to the shutdown right now? Is it slowing us down in any way?
No, we have not seen any impacts here in Leon County. And specifically to the point of USGS, they consider monitoring rivers and lake levels to be critical functions that they will maintain no matter the shutdown.
Okay. Well, that's fantastic. I just, I've been hearing that in the national news, so I wanted to make sure there was no issues here. So, and Matt, while you're up, I'll ask another question that you referenced. I appreciate all the information on the burn ban and what the Florida Forest Service puts out about the fuel potential for wildfires and other things like that. The issue that I was hearing about from a handful of constituents was the air quality issue. So I'm curious if there was any examples about air quality as it relates to debris burning when the power is out and people have windows open. This may be kind of a canary in the coal mine type issue that doesn't affect a lot of people, but it does affect people with asthma and other things. So it's more of a unique health concern when the power is out during a disaster. Did you all see anything like that, or did the forestry have any comments about that?
They did comment on that, the Florida Forest Service. So over the past few hurricanes, when we had widespread power outages, they had been monitoring the air quality and had not issued any advisories such as to prevent burning except for the purposes of wildfire fuel. So they would issue advisories to that effect, but did not over the past three hurricanes.
Okay. Part of the public information, I just, on burning issues in the future, I think it would be helpful if we talked about the air quality for your neighbors and things like that, even if we don't get to the point of a ban or something, because that is an issue that some people deal with. The, just, those are my main two questions. I think the only other thing I wanted to say was, going back to the beginning here, our ability to not just look at what has happened, but take findings, recommendations, prepare for the future. I'm not sure about you all, I'm sure it's similar, but the emails that I got this time, the number of emails during the storm, was dramatically different. Hardly anything compared to Hermine and some in Irma. That is evidence of better communication. So thank you for that. Matt, you just skimmed right over 20,000 on the app. I know you're proud of that number. So for everyone in PIA, well, you know, that, well done with that, and more people are taking advantage of it. I do think that this is one of those opportunities, and I would love to hear more, Mr. County Administrator, perhaps not today, about how we're sharing this information with others, what the state is doing, coordination with them. I think we've got some new opportunities with our partners locally and around the state and the region to kind of push this forward. And I do believe that Leon is a model for this and kind of getting ahead of it, and we're seeing the result of that. So well done for all of you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Minor, then back to Commissioner Deluge.
Thank you, Chairman Jackson. Commissioners, staff, we again applaud your steadfast, immediate, and you're the consummate pros at our efforts to manage the post-storm event of Michael. There's no question that, Alan, in your comments to us, that our need to, for lines of credit, is very, very necessary to offset FEMA. As we were talking, I was wondering, is FEMA, are they open? Do they work? And increasingly, it's clear to me that as our federal government diminishes its tentacles of support to anybody, that we have to be able to stand on our own, too. And you cited the reimbursement process and how long it is. I'm thinking that commissioners, that $5 million is insufficient. If the cost expense were $22 million, of which 87.5% we might get reimbursed, I guess after the wall gets built, I'm not sure when. There are commitments that our federal government has that we simply are not the priority. And North Florida, in the restoring of our North Florida counties, has not, there's been no special session from the legislature, there's been a call from Monfort, and that's just about it. And because we would have to do lifting foreign excess, and recall, if I remember, that we got winds that were 71 miles per hour. The other part down there, I think I heard the reports, so you guys, it hit at 153 miles an hour, 154. Ladies and gentlemen, we didn't even receive 50% of the strength of this storm measured in miles per hour. So if we're $22 million at 45% or 40% of this storm's capacity, what would, and what would it look like had we received 60% or 70% of this storm's strength? We don't use the word in Florida, global warming, but I was wondering scientifically, are we to anticipate storms on a more regular, with this velocity of strength? So clearly, we need to up that line of credit. And there's such a thing as reciprocity. And for the amount of monies which our county, we deposit in the bank that we do business with, I really believe we need a far more significant line of credit to offset these continuing events that will stretch us in ways that neither the state nor the federal government is going to get back with us. So I would recommend to the county commission that we allow staff to revise a number that we all have anyway, lines of credit for these kinds of emergencies, that we receive less than 40, 45% of the strength of this particular storm. And I'm glad we only got 45%. Secondly, I think that Ricker should be put back online. I was very disappointed that a superintendent couldn't unilaterally close down Ricker's High School. It was not open. That's horrible. And I think staff, that when we think about the homes of our community, which may have the lesser building standards or the lesser rigorous building standards and codes and all, that those areas, if, let's just say, if we got winds at 90 miles an hour, those homes are, you know the little story about the big bad wolf, somebody built the house out of straw, somebody built one out, you know? And when you look at the progressively less well-built homes, me and Minor and Jackson, we're going to take a whooping that we just can't describe. And I think that our plan for winds coming in that direction, we need a focal point on the areas where we already know their home is not as well-built. And I think that in our future preparation and relief effort, they ought to be focused. That's number two. This is a good report, but we need to have access for the west side and for the south side, which I didn't have anything open, and I gotta have, we gotta have that. We just gotta have that in the future. And then, of course, I have discovered, I don't know if you guys have heard, but in the aftermath of the storm, what the people want first and foremost is for the lights to come back on. There is a certain security and a sigh of relief that when electricity comes on, people, it's almost like we can handle it from here, we can make it. And that focal point, of which the city, this storm was less politicized. I'm glad that our mayor was running for something and our governor was running for something else. So it wouldn't be no stink about this. And because this was less politicized and there was more collaboration, I think that the response of having 90% of the homes back on within a week was really great. I didn't know if it could be done, but it was done. But in the aftermath of a storm, it's my observation that the one want and need is for electricity. And any way we continue to have that kind of response, I think is excellent. I was very pleased, Commissioners, to hear about the regional quarterly effort. I think recommendation point 34, point 1, was excellent. I have an interest in number 72, which was the tourism division, hotels. And I really, I mean, since that's it, this is where we're supposed to talk about this. And I don't know if workers will put out the hotel to accommodate football fans, but that was on the street. I don't know if workers who are working to restore power in our community should take, on a humanitarian basis, precedent. But we had workers who were put in tent city out there off of Spring Hill Road. I didn't like that, I'm telling you. And when people are here to put the lights back on in our community, I don't think football fans take a precedent when we're dealing with what our area dealt with in the aftermath of hurricane. Even if the football game had got canceled, to keep the workers focused on health, safety, and welfare, that's more important. But I think that we should have a humanitarian pricing of our hotels and places of accommodation, not only blocked for workers who are here to help, but that the prices all come down and that we're not having price gouging and all of that. Y'all didn't go into that, I don't know if that's our role, or if we just go by, let the public, the private do what they do in demand and supply. I don't like supply and demand pricing, because that mean that all the poorest people in the counties next to ours are going to get left outdoors, ain't going to get no place. It won't be available, because when you put prices at football season prices, most folks just can't get to that. And I think that the coordination effort, or whatever happened that put our workers out there in tent city and out the hotels, yes, I think that was wrong. And I think the future, and since I've heard Matt say that we're going to have this event again in the future, we need to make priority for people and their accommodation. And then finally, 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 I want to thank Commissioner Rick Minor. And though Rick is not necessarily a part of the recovery, but he is, because the food that, and the food bank, and availability, what you have done in the aftermath as leader of our second harvest food bank, has been major as well. I had, Piggly Wiggly was closed, they were closed extended. I think that food, public should be a priority. Piggly Wiggly and people who have food and big freezers, that should be a focal point to bring their lights, electricity back on first. And in that room, when y'all deciding stuff like this, Vince, fight for the food people. And I don't know if you lost food or what y'all did out there, but I appreciate and respect the efforts of Commissioner Minor as the head of the second harvest, independent of being a commissioner, and that was huge. When these trees fall down and the roots, you know, just tilt over out the ground, how do you detect when gas lines have been ruptured? And how do y'all know? Does the pipe register that is a rupture? If there's no electricity working, is there any kind of sensor that goes off when you have the kind of trees and numbers that we have? And I think that the future, I would be more comfortable if we're able to detect gas lines which may be ruptured, in particular along our canopy roads and so forth. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Really, really great job. Really outstanding job. As someone who, in my other life, I work in a nonprofit that is a member of COAD, and so I saw your efforts from the position I was standing right after the hurricane. And Leon County really did an incredible job. I mean, and just want to commend all of you and everyone in the county for doing that. The after-action report is outstanding. I read through it, the level of detail, the one-upmanship after Hurricane Michael and even approving what we already have, I think is really impressive. For example, you know, I went to Leavoss, the sandbag location, and I totally agree with the ingress egress issue. I think moving out to Fred George is a really smart idea. I think the exploration of the sandbag tubes to speed up some of the filling of the bags, I think is also a great idea. There were people really pitching together and helping the seniors and other folks that really could not do that themselves, but I think that would really help expedite things. Real quick, a couple weeks ago, I met with JR Harding, whom you may all know. He's one of the leading advocates for people with disabilities. And we talked about a whole host of things, but we spent some time on emergency management and special needs, people with special needs right after the hurricane recovery, and leading up to a disaster that's impending. One thing he mentioned to me, and I've got three things here, they're just suggestions to think about. One thing that he mentioned to me is that there was no countywide inventory of hotel space with 80A compliant rooms. According to him, nationwide, only 1% of hotel rooms in the United States has rule and showers. Only 3% of these rooms are 80A compliant. So if we were able to get an assessment from our hoteliers, which, what their stock was, what the inventory was on hotel rooms that were 80A compliant, and then communicate that, work with hoteliers on trying to help people with special needs that would like to stay in those hotel rooms, leading up to the hurricane and after the recovery, I think would be helpful. And I think that is closely related to finding number 72, where you're working with them already to help accommodate first responders and the like. Not everybody can afford a hotel room to stay in as a disaster is approaching. One thing that JR mentioned, this is just something to explore, was the idea of maybe in a conduit to help supply home generators to people with special needs that are highly immobile, you know, reliant on oxygen equipment and things like that. If their power goes out, having a generator that can help them through, even if they can't stay in a special needs shelter would be very helpful. And then the last bit on that part is perhaps helping to coordinate volunteers for debris cleanup for seniors and people with disabilities in Leon County. We saw that in our neighborhoods, people helping each other out, going to the next door to help people with cleaning up debris and bringing up to the curb. If we had, it doesn't have to be Leon County that's coordinating this, maybe some nonprofit in this community kind of helping to coordinate volunteers that are willing to go help those that aren't able to take that debris to the curb themselves. Now, I know that the key thing for people with special needs is to register with the Florida Division of Emergency Management in that registry, right? That's the first step that everyone, if anyone's listening here that is a person with special needs, to go in and register with the Division of Emergency Management. That's the first thing, because without that registry, we don't really know what our needs are with regard to people with disabilities in this community as it relates to a natural Quick question for our county administrator, with the line of credit, the assumption is that with the line of credit, once the FEMA dollars come in, we will pay that balance off to zero, but then keep the line of credit open for the next storm that comes. Is that correct?
No, we would, we would shut it down. We'd close it out, and it wouldn't even be until the FEMA reimbursements, but until we start even receiving property tax revenues, which would offset our impact, and just to be able to cash flow better. But Alan, you can jump in if you want to provide more detail.
Okay. All right, sounds good. And then the last thing, Matthew, I don't know what you and I have in common, but I also kind of did some math to visualize what 1 million cubic yards of debris is. It is more than
It is more than 71,000 truckloads of dump trucks, standard size.
How many?
71,000 truckloads of dump, of standard dump truck size loads. And it's also one football field that is 56 stories high, so more than twice the height of the Capitol Building. That's a lot of debris. So, that's it, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Minor. We plan on getting through general business. So I've got Commissioner Deluge, Commissioner Dozier, and Commissioner Proctor in queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. Is there a way, this is just an idea, when we're going through this as an after report, I spent a decade at IBM, and back in the day when Tropical Storm Kate came through here, the day after, we had semis full of gas tanks, chainsaws, and generators show up in our front door, and they went around the county and helped us out, all the IBM employees. It seems to me that every county in the state and every county in the country has similar needs. There's got to be, maybe FAC can help us a little bit. I just think there's got to be, before we take a bunch of time and effort and energy and try and mobilize in the effort that we are prepared better, and these regional, the smaller counties around us have no ability to do this, and it strikes me that there's got to be some way to arbitrage or just spread out some of this need, so that in the event of a storm, everybody can collectively put their resources in one place. Counties have a lot of this stuff, and I talked to FAC at one point about this, and I'm just thinking out loud, before we go too far down the road, of having, you know, rooms full of generators that might get used, broaden our look a little bit. And maybe this has been thought of, and, you know, I realize between the state and the federal government and us, it's complicated as far as who pays for what and when and where, but the stuff's out there, and not everybody's getting hit at the same time. So it just seems to be we could coordinate that. And then the other thing, just real quickly, so we're out of pocket $20 million for some indefinite amount of time, and the federal government shut down. Is there any language in the FEMA payback on any kind of interest on this? Because let's face it, really? So we're going to carry $20 million effectively for some indeterminate amount of time, which makes the line of credit we're looking at kind of pale, based on administrative slowdown of the federal government. I'd be curious what that number just generally might be, just for grins, because it's, I mean, that's money out of our pocket that we're spending on just time, that's just federal government bureaucratic nonsense. So, okay, thanks.
Commissioner Dozier, and then Commissioner Proctor. We'll be brief in.
Yes, sir. We'll be brief, and Commissioner Deluge, I'm sure, Commissioner Minor, and Matt are on the math right now. They're doing that, right, calculation for them? Just checking. Okay. The interest, yes. So I'm glad for this conversation, because I forgot to, that I wanted to mention one piece, which is about our legislative priorities potentially going into session, but also the upcoming NACO trip, or anything that we might do on the federal end. So the FEMA reimbursements have been, actually, I was pleased to know we've actually gotten money out of Hermine. I believe it was Franklin County that didn't have money from Dennis up until a couple of years ago, where there was some incredible lag with a lot of these reimbursements. Is that right, Mr. County Administrator? So you're right, Commissioner Deluge, they are hurting. There's 40, 50% of the tax base in Gulf County that is gone, and that's just one county. So there's a lot of others that are going to be struggling with this. There are nonprofits that are being stood up and other things like that. But two issues that I would love for this, for our board to support, should they come up on legislative agendas, or if there's any way that we could lean in. FDOT handled the debris contracts for a lot of the surrounding counties. A lot of our workforce comes from some of those counties, and they need to extend those contracts. So there was a letter issued by the Regional Planning Council Board in support of all of the different counties to extend that contract. And so there are a lot of shared resources, and the coordination is happening better, but I think that's part of what the report was referencing, on looking at better ways to improve that in the future. So they, I think you all are working on that. The second issue, though, is there's a hard deadline, my understanding of, I believe it's March 6, for all debris collection to be done, for counties to get reimbursed for that cost. There is no way that our neighboring counties are going to meet this. So this is the big one. If we can support in any way their request, letters are going to our congressional delegation and others to push FEMA to extend the deadline. It may take legislation. And get a disaster supplement moving for the region as quickly as possible, as soon as the government reopens. Those would be the top two things, and our congressional delegation is leaning in pretty hard on that, but they need other support. So there will be some efforts at NACO Conference to raise these issues, and I think anything that we can do for Leon County legislative priorities, should those things come up, I would love for us to join that effort. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did Matt report that we only had one community meeting after the storm? I mean, I guess in the sense of Mr. Britt, Mr. Britt expressed leaving out that maybe we just, we already knew that it was a storm, what is a report? But previously, we've done three or four community meetings in the aftermath, and maybe we didn't have a chance this time, I'm not sure. But I think that we could have had additional, and I'm sure the stories may have been, would have repeated themselves, but I did take note of that, that we did not do an extensive. But I want to compliment and say that this is an A-plus report to Andy, Matt, and y'all did a great job, huge job. And this is a classic alt-to-be submitted for Pulitzer and writing, how to write a storm aftermath thingy. It was excellent, appreciate it. And then under 3.2, the declare of state of emergency, and you know it's under 3.2 where legislatively, and then maybe there's some rule, where we do price freezing. And when the governor put out the, on October 7, issued a state of emergency in anticipation of Tropical Storm Michael, that should freeze prices on hotels, that should freeze prices on tree service, that should freeze the prices of roofers and all of that. That needs to be looked at, and some of that might need to be looked at with state attorneys looking into. There are so many wild stories in things that are going on, that people are able to take advantage of the market when the market is most helpless. And tonight, earlier, the reason when Coach Willie Simmons was here, what makes that little effort to remember what they had done so significant, is that during the week of that storm, AMU officials requested the MEAC, the Midwestern Athletic Conference, to reschedule that game, that this team from Florida should not have to go because players on that team, their families were affected over in the western part of the counties. But the MEAC refused to change that game, ought to make allowances due to the storm impacting players. AMU got on that bus and went up there anyway and had a game, beat that team, and it was sort of a, there was tension because there was no humanitarian empathy, and came back here and got off a bus and got busy in surrounding communities to give relief. So I just wanted to share the context in the, as we look at this storm, as to what occurred, and there was no empathy from the MEAC, but those boys went up and did what they had to do. Thank you again, staff. Great report.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. We have a motion on the floor to accept that recommendation, options 1, 2, and 3, by Commissioner Deluge, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, motion passes. Mr. Administrator, item 17.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item seeks ratifications of the actions taken at your annual retreat. We have no speakers on this item. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Move the staff recommendation by Commissioner Deluge, seconded by Commissioner Lindley, in queue to speak, Commissioner Proctor, and Commissioner Dozier. Oh, good, sorry. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I tried to do this expeditiously, so I actually have something to share with you all. There is one item in the agenda items list. So below our strategic initiatives that we did, this was one of the items that was listed among the agenda items for the water issues. If you remember, referenced this at the retreat, and wanted to bring up an idea of looking at our water issues more holistically. Want to really appreciate, County Administrator, your work. I know you got started on this discussion with staff, and we had a conversation about it, and talked about how this could be referenced as a full strategic initiative. So for the record here, it's, the first one would be ensure the county's water quality and stormwater regulations, programs, and projects are evaluated and implemented holistically to advance county's adopted strategic priority to protect quality and supply of our water. This, I believe, is an opportunity for a new approach, to look cross-departmentally at all of our different policies and programs, look for emerging issues, ways to innovate, the things our staff already does really well. As I mentioned, in December, Floor Association of Counties, with our soon-to-be president of FAC sitting next to me, has established a water committee. I have applied to be on that committee, and this is kind of the same concept, looking at issues holistically. The second piece of this would be more about the community engagement, and, Mr. Minor, I know you focused on that at the retreat, develop and enhance communication strategies to inform citizens of the county's overall water quality and stormwater policies, as well as emergent issues impacting individual water bodies and groundwater. So I know we're late, we had record rainfall in December, these issues are not going away. We've been getting emails and calls about flooding issues throughout the last six weeks, eight weeks, but I think this could be a very interesting approach. And, Mr. County Administrator, I guess I just wanted to ask, if you wanted to say anything else at this point, you certainly don't have to, but I think you all already had some ideas, and this might come back with different implementation agenda items. Is that right?
That's right, Mr. Chairman. Just, they make perfect sense as strategic initiatives, and since you all don't ratify until now, this is the appropriate time to consider this sort of thing, so.
I made a motion, so I accept those changes, yeah.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Commissioner Deluge. And just a couple of other very quick things. I did note in the city commission's workshop and some of the reporting on that, that they had talked about the heavy equipment training and partnering with us, so that's coming up in a lot of different ways. I hope this conversation can be expanded to a lot of different training initiatives. I'm glad we got this one focused, and I know there are others that are looking at different types of training programs as well. So just wanted to note that, the second thing, and I don't want to reopen this unless there's an appetite for it, but the agenda item, or on the arts, it's written in a way that would imply that we are just evaluating alternatives, and I think it could be done in conjunction with COCA, looking at what's happening now, how they're improving things, and evaluating alternatives. If we wanted to have one time to look at all of that versus two different times, I just wanted to make that suggestion. I'm not pushing it right now, but it is, I didn't want there to, that was my suggestion. I'm glad the board took it up. I think it is the appropriate timing, but I don't want to look at it as a conflict between these two. It's just a way to look for new innovative ideas to move our culture and arts grants forward. So that's, those are all my comments, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Right, so we are accepting the change based on the initiative that was presented already. I think the ratifications have been, and you accepted the change, correct? Moved by Deluge and then seconded by Commissioner Lindley. All those in favor ratifying those initiatives signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by the same sign, motion passes. Mr. Administrator, item number 18.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks full board appointments to the ARPC, the TDC, and the Canopy Roads Citizens Committee. Options 1 and 2 seek your confirmation of City Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox to the first two, and Option 3 presents for your consideration eligible candidates to serve on the Canopy Roads Committee. I have no speakers on this item. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, Option 1 and 2, made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Deluge. All those in favor, oh, we do have a speaker.
No, I can make a, I was going to make a motion for Option 3.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, passes unanimously. Item number 3, or option number 3.
Mr. Chair, if County Administrator staff have no concerns about the conflict forum, which I think was just saying that Tiffany McCaskill works at FAC, Floor Association of Counties, of which we are a member, if that doesn't pose any type of conflict, I'm, okay, thank you, Mr. County Attorney, I'd like to make a motion for Tiffany McCaskill for the Canopy Roads Committee.
Motion made by Commissioner Dozier for Option 3, seconded by Commissioner Lindley. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, passes unanimously. Any other items for general business? Mr. Administrator, we have any public speakers?
Not on this item, I believe, under, I believe, yes, if you'd like to take that up at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Mr. Hollinger, you're up.
State your name and address for the record, please. Good to see you.
You as well, Mr. Chair, Delatory Hollinger, 501 Alpha Avenue. I wanted to thank those of you who were able to make it to Saturday's dedication of CK Steel Memorial Highway, and also to discuss something with you. Since that happened, as we know, there's been some discussion in the past few months about Orange Avenue and the fact that it's, that has several jurisdictions, it's owned by the state, it's owned by the county, it's owned by the city, and it took us four years to get the state to designate their portion. And I've had some discussion with the Steele family and also some others who have just mentioned it in passing. They asked, why can't we take it all the way through? Why can't we take the designation all the way through? And so, so I said that I would come here and ask you to take that designation all the way through, and the statute that governed the designation from South Monroe to Capital Circle Southwest was 334.071, and I'll just read a little bit of it. Designation of a transportation facility contained in an act of the legislature is for honorary or memorial purposes, or to distinguish a particular facility, and unless specifically provided for, shall not be construed to require any action by a local government or private party regarding the changing of any street signs, mailing address, or 911 emergency telephone number system listing. The effect of such designation shall only be construed to require the placement of markers by the department at the termini or intersection specified for each highway segment, or a bridge designated and has authority for the department to place other markers as appropriate for the transportation facility being designated. Now, those of you who were around in 1980 may remember that Reverend Steele's last fight was the renaming of Boulevard Street to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and at the time, there was opposition for taking it to where it is now, to North Monroe Street. So at the time, it was confined to the black community, Florida A&amp;M to Fourth Avenue, and it took, and it wasn't until the 1990s that the commission came back and took it to North Monroe Street. So my request here is that the commission consider a designation on the county-owned portion of Orange from South Monroe to South Blairstone, similar to the state designation of CK Steel Memorial Highway. Thank you.
I have Commissioner Maddox in queue to speak.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry.
I saw you make that motion.
Oh, okay. Motion has been made to rename the.
Designation.
Designation. The motion is to designate Orange Avenue from West Road, Delatory. Right, what he said.
And it's a designation.
Yes, it's a designation. No, no, that we make that decision right now and do that.
That's my motion.
Motion's been made and it's been seconded.
It goes, it goes to Blerstone. Yes. No, we're just to Blerstone.
Mr. Chair, I'm fine with having a discussion about it, but I'd kind of like to give it a little bit of time to breathe. I'm not quite sure I follow what we're doing.
I want you to understand what we're doing. We're not renaming a road.
I get that.
We're just, we're just from South Monroe to.
South.
I'm sorry. Some Capital Circle, South Monroe is now deemed to be CK Steel Highway as a designation by the state. All we're doing is taking it from South Monroe to Blerstone, that same designation of CK Steel Highway will be named. So it will still be Orange Avenue, but it'll be designated as CK Steel Highway. That's my motion.
Okay. Now I have a problem with it. I'm just wondering on the fly, I always get nervous when we do things like this because there's, you know, root questions. Somebody comes back and says, well, you didn't look at the signs or you didn't, I don't know.
Commissioner Dozier, I think it's a designation, if I understand it correctly, Mr. Administrator, said state designation, or no, it's a designation and it does not affect the residents that live along the road.
I think he read that during his time of reading the actual.
I want to make sure I understand what we're putting. Commissioner Dozier and then.
Mr. Chair, I'm fine with the motion as it is. I wouldn't mind an agenda item if we need to look at it more, but based on our recent discussions about road naming, Mr. County Administrator, is my memory correct that there are a portion that was governed by the city as well? So is that right? Could we do this as a unilateral action or do we need to bring it back?
We, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, you could do the section that is, it's within your authority to do the section which is ours, as Mr. Hollinger correctly pointed out, that segment. And the westernmost segment from South Blerstone all the way through to St. Joe Plantation Road would be, that's the city, the city's segment.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. So I would be in favor, if we're going to do all of Orange Avenue as CK Steel Memorial Highway, of doing an agenda item, reaching out to the city and seeing if we could do this once for the entire stretch. I'm fine with supporting the motion as is right now, but I think it could be more holistic if we look at it along with our city.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dozier, I understand completely where you're coming from. Commissioner Deloje, you too as well. But I think we should make this decision in a moment. I was there on Saturday and I saw the pride on the faces of the Steel family in that designation. We're not talking about changing addresses, we're not talking about changing names, we're talking about a designation for a man who led a civil rights legacy for our community and for this nation. And so for that small, for that large gesture, a small gesture of making a designation from South Monroe to the part that we own in Blerstone is necessary, not necessarily to be discussed, but necessary to be made a decision right now. So I'm kind of set where I am in this decision to make that motion. As for the city, I would hope that the city will follow the same, the same example that we're setting here if this passes today. I don't think this is a, this is a heavy, heavy push for all that Reverend Steel, Reverend Doctor Steel has done for this community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Deloje and Commissioner Proctor will be brief and then we'll vote.
Let's seize the moment, though. Let's have them in and honor them. I'll vote for it. I don't have a problem with it. I just get a little nervous and if they're, Frank, I wasn't there on Saturday the other day, so I hated to miss it, but let's bring them in and let's honor them here and let's, I mean frankly, it'll raise the bar a little bit with the city as well, you know.
Yeah, if that's the case, I mean, I wouldn't mind presenting them with a proclamation.
Right, that's something.
At the next meeting, I will add that to the, to the motion, that we, that we give them a proclamation here at the next meeting and then we also represent that proclamation at the naming, that proclamation should be ready to naming as well. So I do agree with that. So we'll just go ahead and make both decisions right now. Thank you.
I'm not trying to slow.
No, 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 I get it, I get it.
Commissioner Proctor and then we'll move on to voting.
Well, if it makes the commission feel better, at the dedication of the day was a United States Congressman, State Senator Monford, our State Representative, Lorraine Osley, who presided, every city commissioner and the mayor, it's just everyone, including Bishop A.J. Richardson, Reverend Holmes, it was the most single illustrious attended event, save for the absence of attendance from the county commission, everybody else was almost there. And I'm not sure, I'm sure it was a very busy day for county commissioners, but every elected office in this community was represented. And I think that in terms of the support that was shown by those whose weight and their receipt of votes from community, they were there. Supporting the Steel family here with a proclamation is a good thing to do, as well as naming the street. And because I saw this on Saturday for myself, in which I was a speaker, I note the strong support outside of this particular room, there's not that type of resistance. Want to thank Mr. Hollinger for his efforts since 2014 to secure that naming through Representative Allen Williams's office and sometimes the wills to name something in the public. And so long as we're not treating the Steel family as Nicodemus who came to Jesus at night and to bring them here in this room and give them a little sheet of paper, the effort is not to recognize a backdoor meeting here, but to put a public declaration of the name on the street so all the public and world can reflect on the word CK Steel.
Commissioner Proctor, motion has been un, I have a speaker in queue. No? All right. The motion has been made by Commissioner Maddox and seconded by Commissioner Minor to rename the portion from South Monroe to Blerstone Road as, designate, not rename, designate as a memorial highway, the CK Steel Memorial Highway. All those in favor of the motion on the floor and the proclamation to be included at the next board meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, passes unanimously. At this time, we will adjourn briefly and reappear at 6 o'clock for our public hearing. Thank you.